Okay, if I can have everyone's attention. It's June 15th, 2023, and I'd like to welcome you all to the second budget hearing of the Forsyth County Board of Education. And we have an agenda up now. We're welcoming and pledging before we approve. If everybody will stand, we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
It's approved.
Motion by Tom and a second by Mike. All in favor? Enameness? And now we will open the meeting up for the public hearing about the budget. We'll have Larry Hamill do a presentation, but first Dr. Bearden would like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Before I turn over to Mr. Hamill, just a couple of comments. We have amended the budget proposal since the last time we met a couple of weeks ago, and I'm going to go over some of that in just a moment, some of the high-level stuff, and then turn it over to Mr. Hamill. But I just wanted to share with everybody, there was four major priorities as I put this budget proposal together with my staff. Priority number one was to make sure our students continue to have the resources and support they need to access a quality education. We believe that priority was met with this budget proposal, and again, it has been revised. The second priority was to ensure that we remain regionally competitive with our professional staff's compensation package. That priority's been met with this proposal. The third priority, and probably the reason many of you are here tonight, is to make sure that we are financially efficient and sensitive to any potential increases in school taxes for our citizens. When I first made the initial budget proposal, the estimated tax bills had not been released to our community. We certainly knew the tax digest was going to go up, but what was an unknown at that time was how much of that increase would be directly tied to reassessments on our current homes. We certainly all know that now. The original budget proposal called for a one-mill decrease in our millage. We also reduced the millage by one mill last year. The estimated tax bills that we all received did not reflect that one-mill decrease in our millage. Now that the estimated tax bills have been released and we see once again the very significant increases in home reassessments, I have revised my current budget proposal to decrease school taxes by two full mills for next year. If this budget is approved, we will have reduced school taxes by three mills in the past two years. This is unprecedented in metro Atlanta, but at this time, it's absolutely the right thing to do. If this revised budget proposal is approved, our operations and millage will drop from 17.3 to 15.3. And again, it's the right thing to do because these back-to-back years of increased assessments on our homes is also unprecedented. The fourth priority, and this one is equally important, we want to make sure that our school system is positioned to handle any possible future reductions in state funds. It is possible that we're already in a recession, or we might be headed into a recession. From 2003 to 2018, school systems in Georgia face year after year of austerity cuts. What does that mean? Basically, what it means is the state has a funding formula for public education. If they can't afford to fund it, and for 15 straight years they could not afford to fund it, then school systems lost state revenue. For Forsyth County schools during that 15-year period, we lost $160 million in state revenue. While I certainly hope we're not looking at another year of austerity cuts in fiscal year '25, a year from now, we need to be prepared for that possibility. Retaining our fund balance will hopefully enable us to weather a round of austerity cuts if it does happen without having to increase the future millage or implement a reduction in force. And as Mr. Hamill will share with you in the budget in just a second, our budget is 89% people. I'm going to ask Mr. Hamill to go through the details in just a moment, but to recap, if this budget is passed, as now it has been amended, I believe all four priorities will be met. Our students will have the resources and support they need. Our professional staff will be regionally competitive. We're not the highest. We're not the lowest. We're competitive. We will provide tax relief to our citizens, a two-mill reduction once again from 17.3 to 15.3 for operations and maintenance. And number four, we will retain a healthy fund balance. I do also want to make a couple of clarifying comments. As you can imagine, the board and I have received many emails over the past few weeks. It's impossible to respond to all of them, but there were a couple of common questions, and I want to make sure everybody's on the same page. The first one we received many emails was about property assessments. I want to be clear, that's not a function of Forsyth County schools. That's a function of Forsyth County government. Obviously, your Board of Education adopts a budget, and they adopt a millage. We have nothing to do with your personal property, what it is appraised at. Again, that's a function of the local government. And again, when your tax bill came out a few weeks ago, that did not reflect the one-mill reduction we already had in place, and certainly doesn't reflect the two-mill reduction that I'm proposing tonight. Also, what I wanted to remind you of, last year, we reduced debt service millage by one mill last year. So if this budget is adopted, as I'm now presenting, our millage rate for school taxes next year will be 15.3 for operations and maintenance and 1.413 for debt service, which again is one mill lower than last year. The board and I have listened, and we will continue to listen. We will continue to operate a world-class school system as our citizens expect, and we will do so in a financially efficient manner as our community also expects. Finally, I'm really proud of the work we did earlier this year with our legislative delegation. We have a couple actually in attendance tonight around the floating homestead exemption resolution that the board passed and the legislative delegation is moving forward on, but our board recognizes we need to provide property tax relief now while also protecting the quality of education for our students, and I believe this new amended proposal does both. And at this time, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Hamill just to hit some highlights of some of the changes we have made, then I want to give the board members a chance to comment if they would like, and then we have citizens signed up to speak, and we're here to listen to you tonight. Mr. Hamill.
Thank you, sir. So tonight, we're going to look at updated version four of the proposed initial budget presentation. Today's June 15th, 2023. Just to highlight some highlights, Dr. Bearden's already talked about some of this, but just for the board members as well, and as also the people attending tonight, one of the things we want to talk about is going into 2024, we're predicting to have a population of almost 55, excuse me, 54,500 students. One of the things that this budget does do is it gives a 5% COLA to our classified staff. Those are staff who are not teachers. The teacher pay was increased by the governor's $2,000 promised increase to the teachers' pay scales, and on top of that, we ensured that there were some additional local funds to make sure that almost all teachers were getting a minimum of $3,000 this year. The budget does include 85 new school positions and 12 district-level positions for growth. With the change in the teacher pay scale, a brand-new teacher out of college by the eighth year should be making $60,000. State revenue is still steady. The governor increased pay by the 2,000. There's no austerity cuts in this budget. The county tax digest continues to grow by the housing market increase due to inflation, low inventory. For fiscal '24, the SMA growth would be 9.71% to the tax digest in terms of taxes for us with a 15.3 millage rate. The school system continues to reduce the millage rate. We reduced it from 17.3 to 15.3 for this version of the budget. This two-mill decrease continues with the one-mill decrease we had from last year for debt service from 2.418 to 1.418. The three-mill decrease in conjunction, excuse me, the two-mill decrease in conjunction with the one-mill decrease last year will result in about $62 million back into taxpayers' pockets for avalon taxes. The combined millage rate of 16.718 is the lowest since 2006, and I think Jeff, Dr. Bearden, you made the comment when you got here in 2000, I was at 10?
14.
14, excuse me, that it was at that time pretty low then, but this is lower than that, I believe, right? The proposed budget has a total increase to expenditures of 10.21% for fiscal year '24. This increase includes of that 10.21%, 6.41% in state mandated increases. That's including the $2,000 for teacher pay and also almost $30 million in healthcare increases that we have no control over that came through the state of Georgia. The remaining increase is only about 3.8%, and this is for step and salary increases for employees as well as operation cost. The proposed budget does include a 4.9 million reserve for future land purchases as we've exhausted most of our land for future growth. The general fund budget for '24 maintains a 15% fund balance. And for 2022, the per pupil cost for the largest 12 school systems in this area for Forsyth was $10,132.27, the lowest of 12 largest school systems, and the increase from year to year was only amount $329.22 per FTE or student, and we'll go more on that later in the budget. In addition, we're the only school system in the state of Georgia that's maintained, excuse me, that's maintained a five-star efficiency rating under the state guidelines for the seventh consecutive year in a row since that state mandate's been out there. So we'll go ahead and dive into the budget. As you can see atop the cross, we have revenues, look on state. We have the first column, the '24 budget, the second column, the '23 budget, any increase or decrease of that budget, percentage decrease or increase of that category going across. The second category is expenditures. We break it down by function code. You have instructions all the way down through debt service. You have excess revenue over expenditures. We start out the 7 July 1, '22 year with about $117.6 million in fund balance. We're predicting about $10 million in revenue over expenditures for '22. We're expecting about $7 million increase over our revenue-to-expense budget for this current year. Last year, the board approved $33 million in reserves for debt service to help take care of part of the cost that's going to be cured by the school system for debt service payments over the next couple of years with a one-mill drop. We also have $4.9 million in this budget for proposed reserves for future land purchases. Any fund balance at the end of this coming district year, '24, 630, it's going to be about $96.8 million. That's 15%. As you can see atop, across the top, revenue, you have the local and you have state. You can see local for this year is about $341 million, state's about $311. That trend continues to show that we get more money for local funds to pay for the budget versus what the state provides us. The money provided to us by the state is under something called the Quality Basic Education Formula, and that's a formula that ensures all schools have enough money to cover those positions they've earned. If you go down on expenditures, down from instructions down to debt service, you'll see that the majority of our money, almost 73%, is in instruction category. That's tied directly to schools. That total increase for this year would be 59.784, or about 10.21%. Now, if we break it down a little further on the expense side, you can see the breakdown between salary and benefits and operating expenses going across compared to '23 budget year. Again, you can see the increase and decreases, the percentage increase and decreases next to that. What we do want to point out at the bottom, though, is you can see where in '23, salary benefits made up about 88.53%, and this year, it jumped up to 89.47. So we're spending almost 90% of our budget each year on salaries and benefits, and only about 10.5 on operations. Just to give you an idea of how that $59.7 million is broken down, if you look down there to your lower right, you'll see that the state increase of 2,000 is going to be about $7.8 million. The state healthcare increase is going to be almost 29, almost $30 million. That's 6.409% of the total 59%, excuse me, $59 million or $37 million. The other $22 million, which is coming from local budget, is only about a 3.8% increase for the total of 10.2. Now, this is just a pie chart to kind of give you a visual idea of how the budget looks. As you can see, I call it the Pac-Man slide. The biggest part is the blue, and that shows you how we're spending most of our money at the structural level. This is just kind of to get you an idea, also another pie chart to show you how salary and benefits are a huge chunk of what our budget is day to day. These are the different positions that we are hiring through the school year for 2024. All these positions were vacant positions put into the budget. We had 85.39 positions at the school-based. We had 12.5 at the non-school-based. You can see we have plumbers, carpentry, electrician, and so on. If you look at the bottom, you can see that the pay scale COLA's 5% step increase was about 4.8, and the benefit increase was about $32 million. This is a breakdown of the revenue you saw on the first sheet, so we can talk to this. The local revenue you'll see from the budget year '24, the first column compared to the second column, '23, you can see the increases, the decreases. The local budget's total is going up about 7.1%. A couple of things I do want to point out, you see some decreases on that budget, particularly for intangible taxes, real estate transfers, and other local revenue. That's reflecting the decrease in local revenue we started collecting sometime about July, August of last year through the time now where the amount of money being collected has gone down as the interest rates have gone up. At the bottom, you can see that the QB formula went up about $36 million. The majority of that is the 2K increase and also the healthcare increase coming through that. Other state sources went up a tiny bit. Federal-controlled money went up a tiny bit. That makes up about 13% increase for that area. Total revenue is projected at 652 versus 593 for $59 million and 9.95%. There's a breakdown at the bottom. You can see that the projected gross tax digest is about $25 billion. The exemptions are almost $4.5 billion for net digest of 20.7. At a 15.3-mill millage rate, that should generate $317 million. The commission amount that the county collects would be 2.5% of that, or almost $7.9 million or $8 million, which means we should net $308, $309 million out of a collection rate of 98.5%. That should bring in about $304 million compared to last year. That's about a $25 million increase. On the QB formula, you can see they were predicting $306 million. We're predicting that the midterm money, that's money that we would get next May or June from the state based on growth, is about $2 million, and that's about $308 million compared to last year, $271, or almost a 13.36% increase. There again, most of that increase is due to the healthcare cost and the 2K passed through the state of Georgia. This is just another quick pie chart to kind of give you a visual of how that looks. The local portion is slowly increasing every year compared to the state, and that's usually because we are collecting more and more property tax in terms of avalon going up versus what the state gives us. Now, in the years that the austerity is there, that number is dramatically different. All right, so this is another sheet. We just kind of want to give you an idea of what the millage rate history looks like since 2000. As you can see, back in 2000, it was 15.1 and 1.918, excuse me, 1.98 for a total of 17.08. This year, with a 15.3 for M&amp;O and a 1.418 for bond millage, the total will be 16.718. You have to go all the way back to almost 2006 before you can see that rate right there. This is the chart we'd like to show you, just to give you an idea of how we're spending our money compared to the other counties. So this data is data that the state of Georgia publishes on their website through the Georgia Department of Education. They're usually one year behind because it's based on actual audited data. So we have the '21 data in the second, third column over. We have the '22 data in the second column pulled from the website, and those FTE counts are based on the '22 data as well of $53,085. So you can see back in '21, we're spending about $9,800 per student versus this year of $10,132. You can see the difference is only 329. And if you look through that list, you can see how there's not many school systems that are spending as less than we are in terms of the size that they are in terms of students. For example, Gwinnett has 187,000 students. They spend $11,000, almost $500. Their increase from year to year was 1,261. In terms of the lowest increase, that would be Cherokee County compared to us. They've got 42,000 students. They spent $10,900 this year, but they went up only 405. School food services, we're bringing the budget to you so you're aware of it. '23, they had a built-in deficit of $3.6 million. '24, we have a built-in deficit of $3 million. The reason we have a built-in deficit is we're not raising our local rates for students. We're living off of our fund balance, so we're spinning down our fund balance to get it back to a lower rate. Currently, this year, we're going to begin the year with $17 million in fund balance. We're predicted to clear about 2.2 revenue over expenses in the year, about 19.5. With a built-in $3 million over expenditure deficit in the budget for '24, that number should drop to 16.4. Debt service, we're projected to bring in about $29 million. That's based on the new 1.418 rate. Expenditures this year will be about $62 million. We're overspending collections by 32, almost 33 million. We'll be transferring $9 million from SPOS V. That was in the SPOS V referendum. We'll be transferring $11.8 from SPOS VI. That was in the referendum for debt service for a total of $20.8 million. There's still a negative deficit of $12 million. We have a current fund balance of 18 that would reduce our fund balance down to two, excuse me, to 6.2. Other budgets we're going to talk about tonight real quick is special revenue and capital projects. I'll start with capital projects. Capital projects, most of that money is being collected for SPOS VI. We're predicting about $60 million. We're going to transfer out about 20 million of it to get down to 39. We predict about $54 million expenditures. Currently, that would produce a over expenditure of about $15 million. The current fund balance is 127. It would drop down to 111.8. Special revenue is made up of school nutrition and all the other federal programs. As you can see, we're going to have about $36 million, the majority of that's from school nutrition. We're going to transfer in about $170,000 from the general fund. That's for the ROTC program for 36 million. You can see expenditures going all the way down. As you can see, school food services is about 27 of that 39 in total expenditures. We're going to have a built-in deficit of $3 million. Total fund balance is 19 or drop down to 16.4. And that is the budget for version four for 2024. Any questions?
I have a question. Thank you, Larry. The slot, so in this proposal, basically, all the reserves, all the funds set aside for healthcare costs that we know are going to come in, we're not setting that aside.
Correct. So when I talked about the healthcare increase, the portion that was a majority of it for this year was that the state of Georgia took us from $11,435 to $18,906. It's a $7,000 increase. That increase was passed along for all certified teaching positions for this year. That's why you saw such a large increase. There was a small portion passed along for classified position, non-teaching positions of about $250. We still have another 300, almost $400 left of that increase that we have to include in the next two years' budgets. If you take that amount and multiply it by the number of people who have healthcare, it's somewhere in the range of about $13 to $15 million, depending how many people take healthcare between now and then, and that's the reason we reserved that money out. So when next year's budget comes along, there will be an increase of that budget automatically because, no, it'll be about half of that.
Okay.
Maybe two-thirds of that.
Two years.
Yes, so it phases in over two years.
Okay.
But we'll have that $15 million hit our budget the next two years as mandatory increase that we have no control over.
Okay. But it's over, okay, 7.3. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for all your work on this. We know it's a process, and it's a process that takes a lot of back and forth, and I think we've had good dialogue back and forth. And when we first started this process, I shared an email I got from a teacher that was talking about, it was a math teacher, it was talking about the need to increase the teacher's pay, and he didn't understand from a math part how they couldn't help both sides relieve the tax digest and work with the teachers. And so it was very important for me to start the process with this. And last week, we talked about the expenditures, and the expenditures are not increasing. And then we had a good dialogue of where we can make cuts to give back to the community and the taxes, and then this came out, and you actually listened to everything that we wanted to cut out of it, and so I want to thank you for that. It's actually, I believe, a win-win. I actually took the new millage rate against my tax bill, and it took the increase, and I know everybody's different situations out there, but my increase is only by half now, and so that's going to help us out a lot. So I just want to thank you for your ability to listen and to have the dialogue and be creative in how we can make that cut so we give back to the community.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to say a few things. So I know it's a lot of information. I see everybody bewildered when they're looking at all this info, so I kind of wanted to zero in on some high-level points. So the budget is going up by $59 million when you look at it on this screen. Of that $59 million, 37 would happen even if we didn't change a single thing in our budget because it's coming down from the state, but the state is also paying for that, right? So it's a net zero to the local taxpayer. So our actual budget increase as a system is around $22 million, and 90% of that is salaries. If you look at year over year, our operating expenditures, which is not salaries, has actually gone down. So we asked, we challenged our professional staff, thank you, Larry, to look for ways to cut those expenditures, and they did. They did come down this year. A big thing for me was to stay within the parameters of the homestead exemption, which we know is coming, and that would limit us to a 4%, roughly a 4% increase per year. We are there. We're within that 4% right now at the new millage rate, so I'm very glad and grateful that we were able to do that. Larry already mentioned this, but this puts us at the lowest millage rate for 16 years, 17 years. So it's a big cut. I ran it through my personal situation with my taxes, and my dollar increase of my taxes is about $250 at this point with this revised budget. So we asked for that. We asked for the two mills. We got the two mills. We asked for expenditures to come down on the operating side. They did. It puts away money for land that we know we have to buy. We're going to buy the land that's coming in the near future, but all the extra money that was getting put away for contingency, we're no longer doing that, right? We're giving that back to the taxpayer. So that's largely how we were able to lower this millage rate. So I'm very satisfied with this budget. I think it finds, it strikes a balance between the needs of the school system and the needs of the taxpayer. I'm a taxpayer. My taxes have gone up 75% in a few years. I'm feeling it just like everybody else. I think this goes a long way to stop the sting of assessed values. So I just want to say thank you to Dr. Bearden, to Larry, and the whole staff for working hard. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that people don't see, where we've been in constant dialogue for weeks now. We've gotten hundreds and hundreds of emails, and I just want the public to know that we do listen. We may not be able to answer all of them. I know we're all trying to answer as many as we can, but we do listen. We are taking that into consideration, and I just ask that you guys, you know, there's still another couple of weeks left in this process. This information will be posted online. Take it, digest it, look at it, reach out to us if you have questions, but I'm very satisfied right now with this budget, so I just wanted to say that, and thank you guys for the hard work that went into this.
I just wanted to piggyback on that because great points from you both, and fitting with, you know, everything that I think with the parameters that, you know, everyone has discussed, you also followed the strategic plan, which that's really, that's our guide, our framework for how we're going to do the next five years, and in the strategic plan, it was recruiting and retaining quality teachers, and that was an extreme focus, and this budget reflects that. And the strategic plan was just put in last year, so it just shows that, and the community was involved in the planning of that strategic plan. So I think it's just a testament to how when the community gets involved and becomes part of, you know, the system and the solution, just knowing that the school system does follow those plans is, I think, is important to acknowledge you all for that. So thank you. And then I also did, I don't know all the information, but in addition to, you know, the millage rate being rolled back, the governor does have a property tax relief bill or something.
A rebate.
A rebate. That'll, I think they'll process that, the tax assessor's office or something. So there's additional relief if you're doing your personal calculations with the millage rate being reduced. The governor does have a plan.
So as I understand it, the way that'll work is the state will give that money to the tax assessor's office, and then they will credit everybody's tax bill $500, which is coming from the General Assembly. So that, whatever you see, and this is, that's a good point. You reminded me of something, Lindsay. When you get that tax, that notice, I saw it, and I, you know, I almost fell back off my chair when I got mine, so I get it. That's just an estimate. That's based on last year's numbers. It doesn't include this $500 credit. It doesn't include anything that we've talked about tonight. So with what we're presenting now and that $500 credit, I think a lot of people are actually going to probably have a lower tax bill than they did last year. So that's very, very possible.
I just wanted to follow up on Lindsay's comment about staff, and I said it in my opening comments, which is worth repeating. You know, we are the highest-achieving school system in metro Atlanta, but if you look at But if you look at category by category in our school system with employees, we are nowhere near the highest-paying school system. This salary proposal for professional staff, for classified staff, it just keeps us competitive. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest. It makes us competitive. And if we're competitive, we still become a place where people want to live and work. It's when we start to not be competitive where we start to lose people to surrounding communities. And we all know if we want to keep our quality school system, we have to have quality people working with our children. So again, I agree with you. I think it's a win-win for both.
So for me, I mean, this is my nineteenth budget. It makes my hair gray, okay? I'm sure everybody out here, and I'll see some gray out there. It makes your head spin. There's a lot of moving parts to this budget, whether it's coming from the state. We have state mandates. In some cases, we're at the bottom of the hill, and so we have to react as things that happen up higher than us. And so a lot of this pay raises, the other things are coming downhill, the health increases, we have to factor all of that into our budget. The way I look at the budget, and the one thing we really haven't mentioned tonight is student growth. We've grown every year. Every budget I've looked at, we've grown. This may be the smallest growth, and as Dr. Bearden mentioned, and Larry did too, as well as the money we're getting in from real estate transfer tax and the others, income that comes from selling a home, that's less than normal. So we're expecting less of that, but we still have growth. And so in this case, we grew about half a school, half an elementary school. So we have to staff for that. We have to have rooms for that. There's a lot of money that has to be spent just on the fact that we have more kids in the system. We've also looked at being competitive, and I've been in HR for twenty-five years and looked at comp. And I understand that, and we watch HR. HR will tell you, we're like a hawk on them, understanding when teachers leave and why they're leaving. And with the CARES Act money that we didn't get in Forsyth, a lot of other systems are putting that into teacher recruitment, trying to get them to come to there, and it's working in some cases. But they'll soon find out they want to come back probably. But I'm just saying. So we're trying to remain competitive so that we are a good place to work, and it would be in the best system, I believe. So we're, you know, I take a look at the budget from a different perspective. I'll look at the number of students, how much we spend in per student, and then I'll look at the local side. State, not much I can do about that. They're going to give us what they're going to give us. The local side is something we can do something about. So looking at that, I came up with a slight deviation, and I always ask, what is that increase for? And these guys have to justify that to us. Why aren't we spending more money? And just like in any business. And so in this case, we found it was extra, and it was a lot of the digest. We don't get the digest until right before we submit the budget last time. So it's kind of an unknown to us. And so we're somewhat playing a guessing game at the end of this year, and when we're doing budget, and we have to hurry up. We don't know what we don't know. And we're in the process now of trying to understand better that things have been somewhat solidified. And one other piece of this that you kind of went over, but we bring it up every year, is the two and a half percent commission that we have to pay the county to collect the taxes. That consistently goes up as the local tax goes up. It's almost eight million dollars this year. So that's money in the county budget, mainly to run the tax commissioner office and whatever else they use it for. But it's coming through our budget and through our mills. So that's about a, you know, a small portion of what we gather. And so I thought I'd just make emphasis on that. But look at the details, you know? A lot of people are turning to social media for their news, and that may not be the great place. These are the facts. Get in the facts. Learn what's good and bad. If you see something you don't like in terms of expenditures, come back to us. And like we said, we're about ninety percent people. So most, ninety percent of the comments got to be about teachers and their salary.
Also, Larry, maybe if you could explain real quick about the Equalization Act, about the first five mills that we collect goes to the state.
Right. So the QB formula, when you look at it, it says that we get earnings for salaries, we get earnings for operations. And then what it does is says you have to pay your first five mill share against that at the state level. So this year, that five mills is almost seventy-four million dollars that was taken out of what we earned, out of that number before we got our QB number of three hundred and six million.
Yeah. So if we're collecting fifteen mills, the first five go up and never come back down. So that affects all of us because this is an affluent county. So basically, most of that money, if not all of it, doesn't come back here.
And we have to factor in risk, as we talked about, recession, other things. I survived through two thousand and eight, and I look back at the dollars in that world and how we survived that recession, but yet grew in terms of capability as a system. We increased what we're doing. We did better without raising more money. And we're planning to react if that happens. We never know what's going to happen there. And if we do get austerity cuts, that means we've got to come up with the money to sustain what we're doing or start cutting. So we're trying to assess that risk along with just doing a budget. So there's a lot of moving parts here. And so study the budget that we put out online and really get a sense of how the money comes in. So that's my comments.
There's just a couple of things I want to say. I think sometimes people don't understand about the senior exemption. I got a lot of emails where people were, we still have, the senior exemption is one hundred percent school tax. You're exempt from school tax. So if you're sixty-five and over and you have that exemption, then you don't pay any of the school tax. I know there's been some misinformation out there. And also, I just wanted to point out that we're a school board, but we don't work, we don't have offices here. We're not here every day. We're citizens, just like you are. My taxes personally have gone up forty percent in two years. I mean, I will sell any of y'all my house that will give me the assessed value for it. And we don't have anything to do. I had an email that said, can you come and assess my house again? I mean, we don't have anything to do with that, but I wish somebody would come and do mine. But anyway, I just wanted to say that we're a board, we're people just like y'all. We feel the pain, and we understand it. And we, that's why we've gone back and, you know, we passed the resolution for the homestead exemption, and you will get to vote on that next year. So be sure and go vote. I think it'll be on the ballot next year, right?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four? And so we, and a lot of times people, oh, you just rubber stamp stuff. But we, you can tell everybody has, we all work individually with Larry and Jeff and whoever else we need to talk to. And everybody spends a lot of time talking to each other. And I just want to thank all of y'all for your hard work and working hard to help the citizens. And with that, do you have anything else? Okay. Next, we'll start with our public participation. And we have a little timer up here. When the lights are green, your three minutes start. When it turns yellow, you have thirty seconds remaining. Flashing yellow means ten seconds. And when it turns red, this annoying buzzer goes off, and your time is up. So first of all, we have Jesse Hagberg.
I'm a familiar face.
Good evening.
If your fear is not having a fully funded budget by the state, then cutbacks or by cutbacks due to inflation, you need to start scaling back your margins down. I'm not talking about cutting teachers' salaries. They're the only ones that are worth the money. They already have a below the cost of living estimates in Forsyth County, and I'm talking about cutting back the thirty percent of your bottom line. You mentioned with increased enrollment, we need to start looking at purchasing more land for schools. Perhaps the answer is using a space that we already have. You currently have a building development plan that was put in place five years ago that creates multiple school clusters, requiring more staff, more land, and more expenses to run. We are not going to, and by slightly increasing the enrollment capacity at every existing school would not make us them either. If you don't adjust, the current build-out plans will continue to see a forty-six percent increase in spending on your budget every four to five years. You can play with millage rates a year after year, but that doesn't fix the root cause of why your spending keeps doubling. It's the property tax owners that will suffer. Teachers will continue to be underpaid and pushed out, and the middle-class earners of this county will create a, pushed out and create a larger divide between the wealth and the community. In five years, you've doubled the cost of running this district. Only a fraction of that went to teachers. You built five schools with tricked-out classrooms, thousands of new additional employees to run smaller schools. Although the new jobs were necessary, it eliminated your salary increases across the board for pre-existing staff and teachers. We didn't actually need five new tiny schools. We could have built three larger ones that would have covered that increase and kept the same nineteen to one student-teacher ratio. You would have also had to hire less, half of the staff and sent millions of dollars less. You also would have gotten closer to retaining the teachers and recruiting teachers of this county that you so for, you say that you care about. Since 2019, student enrollment has only gone from fifty thousand to fifty-four roughly, which is only a six percent growth. Your budget's increased forty-six percent. We are expected to have less than one percent, in fact, point six percent, which is only three hundred and fifty-five students. Had you added five to seven extra classrooms to every school, you would have more than needed, met those needs. We only needed a hundred and ninety teachers, yet you hired over two thousand. That's such an eye-opener of how and why your budget is, keeps expanding with pay. You have gone from three hundred million to six hundred million since two thousand and nineteen. Yeah, we've grown as a county, and we needed to accommodate that growth, but that cost came to the taxpayers, and your plans need to be tweaked. The proof is here now, sitting in our mailboxes. I've done the homework, so it's time for you to do the same.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Deborah Stair.
Good afternoon. I just want to say thank you. I know this is not an easy task, and I am a retired teacher. I retired last year. I know that this is an excellent system, is a great place to work, and I know that you're doing the best that you can, and I really appreciate that. I understand from talking to my friends that the class sizes are increasing, and I know that you're doing what you can, but it's not a nineteen to one student average. It's more in the elementary school, twenty to twenty-six per teacher. And I thank you for all that you do, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Todd Peake.
Mr. Peake asked.
Okay.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
Yeah. I did a spreadsheet, and I hope these comments will be pretty quickly. I'm winging it. I don't have any prepared commentary or anything like that. But one of the, I get the numbers are what they are. The problem is the budget, and the values are what they are. But the problem is everything ties to the budget. You can, ten times two is twenty, four times, five times four is twenty. At the end of the day, excuse me, the budget is what drives it. And so like my homestead exemption, I think I'm one hundred and twenty-seven thousand accessible value on Forsyth, two sixty-seven on school tax because there's no school tax exemption. So if my, if I go back to Forsyth Counties, which is another thing, homestead exemption, is it rolling back to when I bought the house in two thousand and eight? Or is it rolling back to January first, two thousand and twenty-two? That's a different question. But, you know, in my mind, it should be going down to what I bought it in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and eight, not two thousand and twenty-two, this homestead exemption, which drops my taxes two thousand dollars. And so I'll, oh, man. So if you still got to get fifty million, then you're going to have to raise the millage rate to get back to what I, to what I did. So anyway, one of the things is on the budget, it's six hundred and fifty million, six twenty, whatever, and, you know, the salary benefits, that's like the main item. But it's very broad, and one of the things is that there needs to be more detail on what makes up the salary benefits, not just this roll forward for the increase. A good budget always has what the beginning number starts with by detail and then rolls forward each item. So you see, because if you're just looking at the increase and not what the numbers are from last year, well, yeah, we went one percent. But what if there's like thirty million dollars in last year's budget that needs to be cut out? Well, you don't have that visibility in here. So I did a spreadsheet, and we can, if somebody will make a motion, I'll be glad to come to one of the working sessions to go over it. But I believe there needs to be more transparency on the salary benefits, but you got, you know, a teacher making sixty-five, but then you have eighteen thousand for health benefits, thirteen thousand for teacher retirement system. And so at the end of the day, you've got a fully loaded cost of a teacher of one hundred and two thousand, looking at the slide for new people. It says sixty-five teachers, one oh two equals this. So, well, fifty-four thousand students times sixteen to one ratio is thirty-four hundred teachers, give or take, ballpark. There's eight thousand employees in Forsyth County. There's no reconciliation between the thirty-four hundred teachers to the eight thousand employees. Well, what about the other forty-five hundred employees? And so I am done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carolyn Miller.
Hi. I'm not being prepared. I'm just here to say a couple of things. Thank you so much for what you do and for lowering that millage rate. I really appreciate it. I know my neighbors appreciate it, and I know it's really hard to do. So I'm, my priorities are the same as yours in terms of good stewardship of our tax money and also how we use that money and where we place it and, you know, who we, how we treat our children and our teachers and our staff. So I want to tell you that. A few things that I'm thinking might be worth mentioning is, when I think of these teachers, I know one of your goals is to retain them. And if it takes eight years to get to sixty thousand, you cannot be a head of household in this county. You cannot. You can't be single. You have to be, you know, you're a working mom or you're a working dad that has another, you have to have more income or you have to have another job. It just, the math doesn't work. So I know you probably all know that, I'm not telling you something you don't know, but I understand that, and I feel like our teachers are our most valuable asset, and you want to retain them. And you want to have teachers that have just a variety of skills and intellect and can go from one subject to another and can work with both students and parents. And the only way you can do that is to have very intelligent, very competitive, very mature, and very skilled educators. So I want to just say that because I'm not originally from Georgia and I'm up from the Northeast. So it's very, very different. If you're from the Northeast or California, it might, you might know. So I just see the difference. Then the third thing I just want to end with is how I see this county grow. I've lived in San Diego, I've lived in Philadelphia, I've lived in Massachusetts, and I've seen the growth over thirty, fifty years of my life. So I think having a priority of looking ahead, and if you know there's austerity coming, like back in two thousand, I forget what year it was, two thousand and eight, when I remember my kids all lost foreign language and never had it again. I have five kids, so that was hard. So I think having a priority of knowing what you're going to do when that comes. So it might not be raising taxes, but it may be thinking carefully about growth and where you can save that money, how you can be smarter with money. And I know you all know this, but bringing it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Vijay Madam.
Thank you for giving this opportunity. And first, I wanted to thank for the work that you do on a year-by-year basis. Obviously, it's something that you take seriously. I did have a few points of clarification or points of interest that I wanted to bring up. The reduction in millage rate that you talked about, I think it's going to account for about thirty, thirty-five percent of the reduction in the increase that was proposed. So there is still about sixty, sixty-one percent increase in, I'm talking about overall[1775.53] So there is still about 60, 61% increase in, I'm talking about overall property tax that are paying its, portion of it is for school. And then also there is that governor's per household credit coming in. But I just wanted to call out that that's still going to be a pretty big increase. Two-thirds of increase will still be effective for everybody here. In terms of the growth, obviously, we want to balance growth. We want to keep Forsyth County competitive as it is today. Great school system, high-ranking schools, and then, you know, all the things we need to keep our students performing and then learning. But we need to balance that out because if we project the way things have been going last few years in terms of the property tax increase, you're going to have the reverse effect. Folks won't want to move in to Forsyth County because they just see the taxes going up. They see not as much of growth, as much of return in the student services. The other thing is, we may be spending less than some of the other counties, but when you look at the growth, I think there's 30 or 40% growth over the last eight or 10 years in the student population. But the overall budget of the school has grown by 100%. Some of the call-outs were, can we be smart about building new schools? How we consolidate them? Do we take some synergies into account? I think there are things that you can do to improve how the budgeting is done this year and going forward because it's all going to add up. And the last idea in my head was, in order for us to actually stay competitive, you may need to look at some of the budget elements, even though it's 90% of the budget goes towards the salaries. Are there portions that we can actually do a better job? You know, what are the teacher salaries versus administrative salaries, the benefits? It was an eye-opening to say, the salary was $60,000 after five years, but when you look at all the other components, that's 110. In my corporate experience, the overage or the additional benefits and others is 30, 35%. This is a lot more. This is almost like 80% more or 80% additional. That means there is something that you can look at across the board to try to stay more competitive. So in closing, I wanted to thank you all for the work you do, but I think we can do better. And the people here and the property homeowners, I will really thank, including yourselves as homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the speakers that we have for this meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Lindsay, second by Mike, all in favor. And now we do have another meeting, which is running late, which is the millage rate meeting. And we're going to take about five minutes, and then we'll start that meeting, okay?